Auto Outlet in P A is the home of no credit checks. It don't matter who comes get a car. You can have no credit. You can have bad credit. We don't care about your credit at all. So if you're thinking about purchasing a car and you tired of getting denied or tired of getting embarrassed every time you go to another dealership and you're worrying about your credit, come to Auto Outlet in P A, the home of no credit checks. So Grandma, how you like the new car from Auto Outlet in P A?
Good evening and welcome to the September 8th meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. I am not Phil Calabro. I'm Dennis Fisher. Mr. Calabro is under the weather and cannot join us this evening. And Mr. John Mack is with us by phone this evening as he's recuperating. So that's it. I'd like to welcome everybody here. In terms of a moment of silence, I consulted Wikipedia and there's an English expression that attributes a Chinese curse, "May we live in interesting times." I don't know about you, but with COVID, with our Hurricane Ida, our storm Ida last week, and the threat and the actual occurrence of tornadoes in our area, it just feels like there's a lot going on. Add to that the fact that the 20th anniversary of 9/11 is coming up. And the death of Chief Wojtkowski from Newtown Borough. So just, I myself need to take a deep breath every once in a while. There's a lot of things that can stress us out. And I just always find it useful when Mr. Calabro takes a minute and asks us to have a minute of silence, all take a couple of deep breaths and clear our minds for the evening. So I invite everybody to do that this evening. If you could, would just take a quick moment of silence. Could you join me in saying a salute to the floor?
My pleasure. To God, in his hope, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda that we have?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And I did notice the agenda is posted on the doors up front. And is that, I believe that's Act 65 that we're complying to. Is that correct, Mr. Sanders?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No special actions this evening. That brings us to our first round of public comment. So we invite you to come to the microphone and make any comments that you care to make. Okay, seeing none. We'll go right on down the agenda. Minor approvals, no minor approvals this evening. Reports of boards, committees, boards and commissions. Was there a planning commission last night?
No.
No, there was not. Okay. I'm missing Mr. Fiddler. Okay, we'll go right to board member comments. I just real briefly wanted to thank our police officers, our rescue squad, our emergency services people who did all kinds of special rescues, special help and assistance of our residents during the floods last week and the tornadic activity that happened north of us and south of us. I was, I happened to be in Utah and Nevada last week and I was getting frequent reports and sending them to my daughter who was at home and sending them to my neighbors. So all I could do from that distance was offer a couple of words of encouragement and I hope that that was helpful. But right now I could give you some words of praise and thanks. So thank you very much. Mr. Mack, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have some report from the Technology and Communications Committee. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. I can.
Great. The Technology Communications Committee met on Monday, August 30th, and Dan Williams, the Chair of that committee, informed me that they discussed attending the Board of Supervisors' work session, perhaps on September 13th, I don't know, there's one schedule, to get some progress on improving the website and talking perhaps about the recent survey they did of committee members. I discussed this with Mr. Lewis and I'm not sure a work session is necessary, but it seems that we need to move forward a little bit more on vetted communications. And if it's possible, we could discuss this at a work session. Mr. Lewis suggested talking to some personnel. I think the intent of the Technology Committee is to focus on the website specifically to run some Google Analytics. The site is already set up to do that. It just needs a few minutes to run the analytics report. And that way we could tell where the site is firing to meet the needs of people who are accessing the site. It can give you a lot of insight to that. Plus the survey that they did, gives you some idea of what committee members are looking for, would like to do with the website. And I think it might be inappropriate to discuss this at a work session. Is there any opinion on this, how we can move forward with that?
Mr. Lewis, you have a suggestion? It sounds like some of this can be handled person to person with staff, but...
Yeah, I think the first thing would be to see what some recommendations are from the Technology Committee and some of those things may be able to be worked out. And eventually potentially scheduling them for a board meeting, just like we did with the Economic Development Committee.
So we have a board meeting scheduled for the 22nd and then another one in the second Wednesday. I for one would make myself available on Monday night if it's necessary, but when could we, when could we know if it's necessary or not?
Well, there are a number of things to be discussed. I know that the video goal, for example, has sent in some preliminary estimates and I think, you know, I for one, if the official agrees, we need to see a more detailed proposal so we can move forward with some of these plans to make the meetings more open accessible to, at least the Board of Supervisors' meetings, to residents. For example, I'm here because I'm at COVID and I'm quarantined for 10, 12 days. Hopefully my quarantine will be over by the, this weekend and I can see my grandchild again in person. So it's been very difficult and I know a lot of other people have concerns about this, including many committee members.
But it does seem like they're in the next, the next regularly scheduled board meeting. What do the agendas look like? Can there's something, is an item like this able to fit into one of the upcoming agendas?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
From, as of right now, I don't see why not.
And that way, that way the, would be open to the, it would be recorded as well, so...
Are you talking about this coming Monday, the 13th, or some other date?
I'm talking about maybe some other date, a regular board meeting, the 22nd, or the first meeting in October.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I can get in touch with the, with Mr. Williams and talk to him about that.
Okay, great. And just keep Mr. Lewis in the loop.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, John?
Uh, no, not bad.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the Park and Rec report for today, registered today for the following upcoming programs. Starting soon, there's line dancing, virtual exercise, I'm not sure what that is, Saturday morning art, chess club, evening yoga, discount for registering for both fall sessions. And don't forget to follow Park and Rec at Newtown Fund and on the website and Facebook. Save the date, there's e-recycling events scheduled for Saturday, November 6th, 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. And there is information for that under the Facebook event. Also, the Fall Township Newsletter and Programming Brochure should be in your mailboxes this week, so keep a lookout for that. On the September 11th, Friday, you mentioned the 20th anniversary is coming. This Friday night, there's a ceremony honoring first responders at Pickering Field. They sold luminaries to light up the neighborhoods on Friday night and their funds they raised selling those luminaries are giving to Shop With a Cop program. So there'll be that and there's a, another fundraiser for Shop With a Cop. They're selling challenge coins. I don't know if you know what challenge coins are, people collect them. There's one remembering the 20th anniversary of September 11th and you can get those and the proceeds all go to Shop With a Cop. So look for that. Remind everybody the Newtown Fire Association Brew Fest is coming up on Saturday, September 18th, at Stocking Works at 12:30. And on 9/19, the day after the Brew Fest, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., the Newtown Rotary Next Gen is having our first annual block party on State Street, starting at Center Street going south. So all kinds of family activities and tables and that kind of stuff, so look for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Oxley?
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that. We have Economic Development Committee meeting on the 21st of September coming up. We adjusted times and frequency of when we're meeting, so that will be the next upcoming meeting. But we are anticipating a report back from the Bucks County Planning Commission on the proposal for the OLI LI districts and business comments and how we can kind of look through rezoning that, figuring out different uses for in there, ones that will provide us with a proper level of revenue for the township. So that's coming up, so we will report back when we get that. We'll be obviously joint venturing that with the Planning Commission, so. And then had a meeting with our State Senator Steve Sinisero to talk about different options in, in the business comments and ways that we can kind of figure out what would be best suited and trying to get him to lobby for, you know, some opportunities of businesses to come in. So he asked for us to work on getting inventory of open spaces, what they look like in terms of square footage, so we're going to get back to him with that. So looking forward to the next meeting when I have with Steve on that. And other than that, I will be at Beer Fest. It's a great event, so I encourage everyone to go. Definitely helps out the Newtown Fire Association. Those are all volunteers that protect our, our community, so we want to make sure that we're there to support them as they are, you know, volunteers. They don't get paid in a large sum, so let's make sure we're there and we support them always. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think the, at one point in time, the Finance Committee was starting to do an inventory of square footage in the, in the business comments, so I don't know if they...
Do you still have any of that?
Let me, let me check now that you have started.
Well, because there, there's also an opportunity that, you know, I'll talk with the committee about it, but there's an opportunity that we can also get surveys from different businesses within the comments about what their needs are as well. That might be very useful in terms of going back to the Bucks County Planning Commission as well with that information, so.
Okay.
But I look forward to that data. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have no public hearings, no land development, reports of officials. Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The sole item on our report this evening is a recommendation from the Township's Outside Council, who is handling the opioid litigation against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids. This involves the, one of the defendants, the Mallencroft defendant, and Mallencroft is in bankruptcy. The Board will recall that recently it authorized our outside council to vote in favor of a bankruptcy plan put forth by Purdue, which is probably the largest offender under the opioid litigation. But now Mallencroft is in bankruptcy. We corresponded with our outside council. Outside council has advised us that the Mallencroft bankruptcy plan is consistent with the Purdue plan as far as what it gets for victims and what it gets for potential municipalities, for local governments. Maybe, maybe not checks, but at least equipment and things to fight against the opioid crisis. Council is recommending that the Board authorize it to vote in favor of the Mallencroft bankruptcy plan. And if I had to frame a motion, it would be to authorize our outside council to vote in favor of the Mallencroft bankruptcy plan.
Do we, do we have such a motion?
So moved.
Give me a second. I'll second it. Any discussion from the Board?
I just have a comment that I know this is going to pass, no matter how we vote, because there are so many people suing these companies. But I have to say, I am upset that the officers and CEOs and so on of these companies that carried out the plan to make these compounds sound much less dangerous than they really are, they're getting away basically scot-free. And it's not just the billionaires I'm talking about of Purdue, who own that company, but Mallencroft executives, none of them are going to be held accountable in these settlements. And that is upsetting to me. I'd just like to make that comment.
What would be our benefit to approve this plan? What would we, what would we get as a township?
Again, this is both our own outside council and the bankruptcy council's recommendation. What we would get is whatever the municipal plaintiffs as a class are getting out of that settlement. I don't have the settlement documents themselves, but whatever the class of municipalities is getting, be that fund, direct funds, be that equipment, other tools, educational facilities to fight the opioid crisis, that's what we would get out of that. There still remain a large number of defendants who are in the case, but this happens to be Mallencroft saying, oops, sorry, we're bankrupt, and they're submitting a plan to try to, you know, the issue is it costs a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of money to litigate this, these claims. And it's, it reached the point where I think the class council has said, we're almost going, even if we push it and we don't win in the end, we're going to lose a lot of money and no one's going to see any benefit. So that's why, look, when you settle, nobody is particularly happy, but that's what a settlement is all about.
We know what settlements are about. We've agreed to many, many, many settlements. But I've heard that several states have already said they would appeal this bankruptcy plan. Do you have any information about that?
I do not.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said I do not have any information about that, John.
So this is really, whatever happens, it's going to be delayed for years and years. So, you know, I don't know, you know, if this is ever going to, we're ever going to see any money.
Well, we might, we might get Narcan kits if this settlement, a settlement actually does take care of some of that paper backlog and continued litigation, at least some of it. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, again, Purdue went bankrupt, Mallencroft went bankrupt. We're dealing with those, inside those bankruptcy cases. Bankruptcy is a, is a federal civil case. And that's taking care of those two companies. As I said, there's still a wide range of defendants still active and maybe we ultimately, the municipalities, the class of municipalities ultimately settles with those defendants, but we're, we're taking these one at a time as they come to us. And I, I'm not handling this litigation, so it's hard for me to give you all, you know, exact specifics, but we did hire the Byrne Law Firm to handle this and I'm just passing on their recommendation.
Are there any other questions or comments from the Board? And any from the public? Seeing none, I call a question. Those in favor of accepting this advice, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose?
No.
No.
Okay, we have a 2-2.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. So we don't give them that direction?
Correct.
And their suit will go on and we're still part of it.
Well, again, the suit is going on. This is just the Mallencroft bankruptcy. I will convey tomorrow to our outside council that the Board, exactly what happened here. The Board made a motion to approve the settlement plan and that motion failed 2-2.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. I did note that I skipped over the engineer report. We did get a written report, but there was no agenda item. So does anyone have a comment or question about the engineer's report?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I just have one question that I've asked several times.
Sure, Mr. Mack.
And I went through this with Mr. Lewis and Leanna, but I don't think I got the kind of answer I was looking for. It's in regard to the village at Newtown, traffic study that's supposed to be completed as part of the land development. And I don't know, I guess we have some money in escrow that they're waiting for when they complete the land development requirements. I know we have a punch list, but I don't know all the items in it. Leanna gave me some idea of what some of the items were. But the main thing I am concerned about is when this traffic study is going to be done. I keep asking about it and it stays in the punch list and I was told that maybe it has to wait or was agreed. I don't know what the agreement really was, when this study should, should be made. If it requires 99.9% of the occupancy, I don't think you're ever going to get that in a retail mall these days. So I would like this study to be done sooner rather than later and I'd like to know if we can make that request to Brixmore to do this study as soon as possible.
Mr. Lewis, you have any guidance on that?
I can reach out to our engineer and ask her to reach out to Brixmore to get that process moving.
Okay. I do see on the report that the phrase "construction is substantially complete" and I'm guessing that's a, that's a term of art for engineering. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
John?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, gets back to my agenda. I have manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $4,939,583. Plan expiration is before the Board, no action required. And we have Chief Hearn here to give his monthly police report.
Evening, Chief.
Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Board Members. Always police report, we documented 1,579 calls for service. We logged just over 21,000 miles in our patrol fleet. We had 21 arrests, 16 were DUI related, three narcotics, one theft and one fraud. There were 12 new cases referred to detectives and five crime scenes processed. We had 38 traffic crashes, 115 citations issued and 159 warnings were issued. Notable jobs, on August 5th, Police Officer Benz, Police Officer Resta and newly hired Police Officer Nolan came upon a vehicle on the highway at Worthington Mill and 413 with a 69-year-old male who suffered a medical emergency while driving his vehicle. CPR and AED and chest compressions were initiated, successfully reviving this subject. His family is contacted and reached out to us afterwards. The father is recovering and doing well. So outstanding job by our department. On 8/24, we sold two of the older vehicles through municipal bid for $10,400. Selective truck enforcement, we had one detail, one to bypass a campus drive with 15 truck inspections. We had several significant events for the month of August. On 8/18, if you recall, hit the media, Yarley Commons, Yarley Borough Police Chief Joe Kelly was shot by an offender inside an apartment complex. Our Newtown units responded to that, assisted in securing the perimeter, evacuating residents while obtaining critical information on the offender. A barricade situation was declared and the subject was subsequently taken into custody by the South Central SWAT team after several hours. During that same time, when we were on that scene, Middletown Township requested an assist officer in their jurisdiction for after encountering gunfire during a domestic dispute where a male subject was shot, shot in the face. Newtown Police Officers also responded to that jurisdiction to help out that neighboring jurisdiction. And there was a pursuit into Philadelphia where the offender pointed a forearm at responding officers and he was neutralized by the Police Department at Roosevelt Boulevard in Adams. No police from Newtown were involved in that job, particularly at the shooting scene at, in the Philadelphia, what they did were critical to the response to the initial assignment. And as you know, on 9/1, Hurricane, even though it's old September, Hurricane Ida remnants hit this area extremely hard. Reported tornadoes in Buckingham, Upper Makefield and Bristol. We received over eight inches of rain ourselves. Our Police Department responded to medical emergencies, fire emergencies, downed power lines, home damage by fallen trees, bridges washed out, roadways damaged, and all while hanging on our normal calls for service. In Park Avenue, we removed a female from a vehicle that was submerged in water. In Penn's Trail, we had five occupants removed from a submerged vehicle. Worthington Mill, female was clinging to a tree after her vehicle became submerged in water. And we had numerous other vehicles submerged and checked for occupants with none being found. Teamwork between the Police Department, the Fire Department, rescue teams, and our Department of Public Works did an outstanding job. The Shamney Creek, as you know, all our access points to North Hampton Township were closed due to the flooding of the Shamney Creek. We put closures into effect to ensure the safety of the public. Worthington Mill Bridge is still closed. Daywork personnel was held over for four hours, as well as myself and Lieutenant Harris worked till 1:00 AM in the morning to ensure oversight and managing the responses. There was no fatalities reported. There was three deaths reported in Monaco and one in Upper Bucks County. Please do not drive around road closed signs, barricades, or cones that are placed out there due to these flooding events. Public service announcements, schools are open. Be careful and alert, pay attention to yellow school buses with their flashing lights, and in-school zones. Officers were present at each of the school openings, greeting students as they arrived. Yesterday on September 7th, Police Officer Louis Dietrich was sworn in as a Newtown Police Officer. He's a 35-year-old resident of Philadelphia that is married with two small children. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Temple University and graduated the Philadelphia Police Academy back in June of 2019. Our community planned events. We held a national night out on August 3rd where our officers patrolled, as well as our supervisors, every neighborhood, giving out stickers and goodies to kids when they engage them on the highway. Coffee with a cop at Transend Fitness on 8/19. And we also have water ice with a cop. We had a coffee with a cop at the Factory Donuts on 9/1 in the South Eagle Road location. We have water ice or Italian ice with cops on 9/9 coming up from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Kids 12 and under will receive free water ice, so stop by and see your new officers. And we have a new event called Cops, Coffee, and Classic Cars, and a tribute to 9/11 on Veterans Park on 9/11 from the hours of 9:00 to 12:00 PM. Stop by and see us. We have a drug take-back event on October 23rd from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Newtown Township Building. It'll be here from 10:00 to 2:00. And finally, if you can, as you know, September 11th is this Saturday. Please take a moment to spend some remembrance time for the fallen on that day, the innocent victims on the plane and in the World Trade Center tower, and in addition to our 400 first responders who gave their life that day trying to protect and save other people. Additional officers and responders are still suffering from toxins that day. So please keep them in your prayers and thoughts. Thank you very much. You happy to answer any questions?
Any questions for the chief? You were very busy.
Sorry for the lengthy report, but I think you needed the information.
That was good.
Thank you, sir.
Can I, can I stop by for some water ice myself tomorrow?
Under 12, sir, but you can pay for it.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the next item under my agenda, or on the agenda under my report, is the authorization to execute a letter of understanding, number five, to the PBA Agreement related to Promotions of Supervisors. The basis of the amendment is to develop a more formalized structured promotional approach for promotions of command staff for the ranks of corporal and sergeant. The policy will include a written examination, oral interpretation, and chief's points for selected candidates. So with that, I would like, I request a motion to authorize the manager to execute the letter of understanding, number five, to the, to the PBA Agreement related to Promotions of Supervisors.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis. A second? I'll second it.
Oh, sorry. I thought you said second. Sorry.
I usually make the seconds.
Yeah, it's all right.
So we got a motion and a second. Do we have any comments or concerns to offer about the agreement? We've all had a copy of it, had a chance to read it? John? Mr. Mack?
I'm sorry, are you talking to me?
Yes. Any comments? I'm just trying to keep you.
Uh, no, no comment.
Okay. So none from the board? How about from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of this amendment to the collective bargaining agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four-zero.
Next item under my report, Mr. Chairman, as we do every year, is the purchase of road salt for, for the winter months. This is typically purchased through the Bucks County Consortium because we get the consortium pricing that goes along with the, the bid. This year's prices, again, low bidder was Morton Salt Incorporated with a price of $57.88 per ton. The appropriate motion would be authorization to, to purchase rock salt for the 2021, 2022 winter season from Morton Salt Incorporated through the Bucks County Consortium in the amount of $57.88 per ton.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sorry. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rossley.
You're welcome.
So this is, it's the lowest bid, but it, it actually came up a little bit from last year. I'm seeing it was, last year was 48.50. And this is a little less than $10 more, but it was still the lowest bid and the lowest bid by appreciable amount. And Morton, Morton is the name in salt, I think. So any other discussion? Any comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of this, am I ready to buy salt from Morton Salt for the year 21, 22? Say aye.
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 And any opposed? I think I heard four-zero. It passes as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item under my report is the 2021 Ford F-350 is about ready for delivery. This, this piece of equipment is for the Public Works Department, is, it was to be in the budget this year, to be budgeted, to be paid off in a three-year term. We had budgeted a total of $12,308 for the 21 payments, 2021 payments. As such, we've reached out to municipal financing, municipal finance, equipment financing, and it is a vendor through Co-Stars for quotes for the financing. The proposal is for three years with an interest rate of 2.725%. And the payment schedule has been modified to fit the current budget. So the, the payment schedule will be $12,000 in 2021 and subsequently $19,638 annually for the, the remaining payments. The appropriate motion for the board's consideration is authorization to approve the three-year financing for the 2021 Ford F-350 with municipal finance through Co-Stars.
Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Mr. Mack. My question you answered, you're going with the three, the three-year.
That's correct.
So, very good.
Is this, is this also going to be used to plow roads? Yeah, this is for road maintenance, plowing, park maintenance, et cetera. Okay, so it'll be very helpful if we have another crazy winter. Yes, please don't jinx it.
I'm sure the Public Works Department will be very happy.
Well, I saw that one of the trucks, you know, obviously has some issues getting out of my neighborhood one, one time. So obviously, Public Works would, obviously need new equipment, so.
Yes. Any other discussion from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving this quote in terms for the Ford F-350, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one other item under my report. It's to switch an elevator contract. Our current vendor is Cone Elevators for service, maintenance, and inspection of the elevator in the police building. Cone Elevator charges $2,580 a year with a base rate of $387.88 per hour. We received a proposal from Elevator Construction and Repair Company out of Philadelphia. Their contract for the year, it would be $1,140 a year with a base hourly rate of $175. So it's a significant saving to the township. So the appropriate motion to that effect would be the authorization to execute the elevator service contract with Elevator Construction and Repair Company.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rossley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Thank you for the information on what to compare the present elevator company. So very good. Any, any other discussion from the board? Any from the public? That said, I'm not seeing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the authorization to execute elevator service contract with Elevator Construction and Repair Company, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four-zero.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a note that the board did meet an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss matters of pending litigation and personnel. And that's all I have under my report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mack, bills, minutes, bills list, and reports.
Okay, I make motion to approve the minutes of the August 25th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting.
So moved.
Okay, have a.
I think Mr. Mack made the motion.
Mr. Mack was the motion. When he gives it, it's.
I second that.
Yep, you got it. So Mr. Mack was the motion, Mr. Rossley was the second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, any discussion?
Very good minutes, I really love the minutes, I gotta say. Thank you.
Okay. You, you maybe can't see Mrs. Donaldson, but she's very, very appreciative.
I thought you should give her a raise, please.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes for, what meeting was that, August 25th? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries four-zero.
Okay, I make the motion to approve the bills list dated September 8th, 2021, totally
Nice motion, is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, call the question. Those who want to vote for the bills list of September, September 8th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Anything else, Mr. Mack?
Finally, I make the motion to approve investment transfers totaling $262,446.78, according to the bills listed, September 8th, 2021.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of passing the bills list of September 8th, 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four-zero. Thank you, Mr. Mack.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, that brings us to our second round of public comment. All those wishing to make a comment can come to the microphone and turn it on and state your name and.
John D. Avril, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. I'd like to thank Johnny Mack for not showing up tonight. My stomach is going to be a lot nicer. Just wanted to stay on record, you know, he keeps on bringing up his different type meetings and stuff, but, you know, John, I don't know if you're watching TV, but you see the people in the audience now, there are a lot of people, right? That's why you need to spend extra money for people to come to the meeting. I said that, you know, if they really want to come, there's something on the agenda, they could look it up on the computer, you know, and if it suits them, they could come. They just want to come and hear, you know, come. Why should we cater to somebody who wants to be lazy and not come out to the meeting? It's not far, anywhere in the township, it's not far. And, you know, if you can't make it to the meeting, you could email somebody, you could send a letter, you call somebody up and they'll gladly, I mean, you call me, I'll gladly say you're, you know, what you want to talk about. But not saying I agree with it, but, you know, I'll say it. But, you know, there's no need to spend money to do extra stuff, you know, so if these people don't want to come out to a meeting. The only time you fill the room is when, you know, the NIMBY people here, they're building something in their backyard. I mean, a lot of it's true, a lot of it's really why you want to come out. And it's good to see the residents come out and stuff like that because some of these developments, like the Arcady we just got bamboozled on, you know, I mean, people don't want that. The, the, the thing is hanging, where are they going to come out and into that thing? And it could be very dangerous. But thanks again, John, for not showing up.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I have COVID-19.
Hi, this is Carol Urbach. I live at 102 Rittenhouse Circle across the street in Delancey Court. I just wanted to be on the record that today, our president, Joe Hillik, sent a letter to the Board of Supervisors through MICA. And I, it's regarding the Toll Plan, the proposed plan that was, a letter was sent by Mr. Adelman to several residents. And our HOA, you know, we did get a copy. So we answered and had comments to the board. I don't know if it was sent out to everybody. I do have a copy here, but it's a three-page letter. Instead of reading it, I'd like to either submit it to, for the minutes.
That has, Mr. Lewis, that has been submitted and distributed to all members of the Board of Supervisors today.
Yes.
Is there going to be another meeting where there will be public comment?
Certainly.
About this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you. I did read the letter, I didn't, hadn't had a chance to digest it, I got it like at 5:00 o'clock this afternoon.
I think our biggest disappointment is the fact that these plans have been made back in the spring, and this is the first we've heard of it.
Well, this is the first anybody's heard of it because they haven't been made public until now. The fact that the Delancey Court HOA received notice of these pla, this proposed settlement plan is the notification that you're getting ahead of time before the Board of Supervisors even places on the agenda to even consider. So any objection to the fact that you're not being notified or not being part of?
No, I'm not, I'm not objecting to that.
Okay, what's the issue?
No, I just, we were under the impression that all of these arrangements were made back in the spring.
No, they were not. A settlement plan was drafted at the time, it was then discussed, but no decisions have been made. And in fact, this board made sure that Toll Brothers sent letters to not only Delancey Court, but also all the Twining Bridge Road neighbors and all the developments down where Mr. Fisher lives, Devonshire Meadows, et cetera, Newtown Estates, I believe. They sent out a, a boatload of letters with this plan just to advise people about what's going on.
And we appreciate it. We do appreciate that.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
And we will continue to listen. Any other public comments this evening? All right. That brings us, let me find my agenda again.
Old business.
Old business. Any old business? Any old business? I guess I would like to ask about, I mean, we have had some discussion around the hybrid meetings. Is there, and I, and we've, I've seen a couple of, I think in your manager's report, Mr. Lewis, you enumerated some of the, some of the costs. Is there a way we could get a proposal on like one sheet of paper itemized or maybe two sheets of paper depending on how much is, how detailed?
I can ask Video Gold for a formal proposal based off of that initial concept.
Great.
Okay.
Is there consensus from the board that that's a good thing to do?
Yeah.
Great, thanks. So, that's old business. Any other old business? We'll go to new business. Going once, going twice. Okay. And we did talk about that we had an executive session before the meeting and other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sub moved.
Right, without objection. Thank you very much.